Call an immediate order. We'll start with pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Clerk, call a roll please.
Peady?
Here.
Rosack?
Here.
Crouch?
Here.
Scarborough?
Here.
Marley?
Here. Any changes to the agenda?
No mayor.
Okay. And we have two proclamations tonight. The first one is the 50th anniversary of Municipal Clerks Week, where as the office of the municipal clerk, a time honored and vital part of local government exists throughout the world, and where as the office of the municipal clerk is the oldest among public servants, and where as the office of the municipal clerk provides a professional link between the citizens, the local governing bodies, and agencies of government, and at other levels, and where as the municipal clerks have pledged to be ever mindful of their neutrality and impartiality, rendering equal service to all, where as the municipal clerk serves as the information center on functions of local government and community, where as municipal clerks continually strive to improve the administration of the affairs of the office of the municipal clerk through participation in education programs, seminars, workshops, and the annual meeting of their state, provincial, county, and international professional organizations, where as it is most appropriate that we recognize the accomplishments of the office of the municipal clerk. Now therefore, I Jimmy Lansford, as mayor of City of Streeter, do recognize the week of May 5th through May 11th, 2019, as Municipal Clerks Week, and do recognize all municipal clerks for their vital service they perform and their exemplary dedication in the communities Second proclamation is where it is for the GWRA Motors Awareness Program, where as the members of the Goldwing Road Riders Association, Motorist Awareness Program, MAP of Illinois, and other organizations continually promote motorcycle safety, education, and awareness programs to the general public and to the motorist community of Illinois, and where as motorcycle riding is a popular form of recreation and transportation for thousands of people across the state and nation, and where as it is crucial that citizens of our city and state be aware of motorcycles on the roadways and recognize the importance of motorcycle safety, and where as state and motorcycle organizations across this country will be conducting a variety of activities to promote motorist awareness and safely sharing the road with motorcycles, and will be reminding riders to be more visible to others, and where as the motorcyclists of Illinois have contributed countless volunteer hours to their communities, and where as all motorists could join GWRA, MAP of Illinois, in actively promoting the safe operation of motorcycles, as well as promoting motorcycle safety, education, and awareness. Therefore, I Jimmy Lansford, Mayor, City of Streeter, Illinois, do hereby proclaim May 4th, 2019, to May 31st, 2019, as Motorcycle Awareness Month, and encourage motorcycle awareness and safe monitoring for all. Okay, we'll move to the public comment sections. If anyone would like to address the council, please step out the head of the table there and state your name, please.
Hi, my name is Joseph Cooper. Could you spell your name just C-O-O-P-E-R? Thank you. All right. I am here to address you guys about the, uh, our, sorry, being Armstrong Memorial Park. I ended up coming across a post on Streeter stuff about the community throwing a foot about it, and instead me and my children and a few others in the community decided to show up and pick up. When we were there, we were able to actually get a real look at the condition of the park. I will fully admit up till a week ago, I never even personally knew existed myself. As of right now, the playground is utterly destroyed. It's actually a huge liability risk. It has broken glass around it. It has broken equipment. The playground's actually coming up out of the ground, broken wood, nails coming out of it. There's graffiti all around it. This one here, I have been pushing for community effort on. You guys have already given us nine wonderful, beautiful parks, and now we have a 10th one that desperately needs everybody's attention. This isn't something you guys can fix solely. This isn't something we can fix solely. I'm hoping as a community, we can all gather together and try to find other ways for the memorial park. I know the family has been very happy that we did. We ended up holding a little community event with these rates, and the kids really enjoyed themselves. I actually have a whole bunch of pictures here for you guys of what the children would like to see, because I do value what the young kids like to think. I also have a petition here. We have about 150 signatures. As of right now, I believe about 80% of those are from Streeter itself. As of right now, we have only raised about $20. We're going to be giving that to the open space committee. I have talked to them. I have a binding here for you guys, and for the open space committee has a petition that has different things that we see. I have pictures of the whole park, and of course, the input from the children. Another thing that I have been trying to see if it's a possibility on is a community garden. I know that the city gets leery about stuff like this, because the community says they're going to pitch in, and then they don't, and then it tends to fall back onto the city. However, I have talked to a few public workers to see if, well, you know, some of their views on it, because it does fall onto them. And I was talking to them about the potential of raised flower beds. With raised flower beds, if the community stops in here, coming in to do work on them, it's easy enough for us just to tear them back out and just have a nice fire on one of our burn days. With that, it would be beneficial to the city, because we can hold small seminars, teach people how to garden in nice weather, and then in return, they can apply it to their yards around town. And it would also be a great opportunity for schools and for nursing homes, for them to have audience to be able to come to the park. One of the biggest things that can help the park right now is one, community showing up to it. If there is a whole bunch of community there, they will start going out and then replacing the playground equipment.
I want to thank you for bringing us to our attention. I mean, the first that I was aware of that was in that, that kind of conditions, when you sent us the email about a week ago and everything else. I know that the public works director has been there and has looked at it at this point in time, and I know that there are some things that are going to be done soon as it's able to get in there and to work, you know, so it's not quite so muddy. But what I'd like for you to do, I'd like for you to set up a meeting, maybe journey with her and Larry, in regards to the park itself, and the issue of the community garden, and maybe we can explore that a little more, because there are other agencies in town that have those, and there may be some way of cooperating together with somebody who has them, and, you know, when you're talking about the education seminars, the program at the high school with the FFA chapter, I know that they do that, they have their own garden. So there may be something there that we can coordinate, that have, you know, these sessions, if you will, for education, and maybe coordinate more of these garden things together, so that they can be contributed into the, giving the food back to the city. So I just want to applaud you for doing that. I'd ask you to leave that petition that you have and all those pictures there with the city clerk, and we'll be, Mr. Higgs will be getting in touch with you back soon.
All right, thank you so much.
Thank you. Anyone else like to address the council?
My name is Patrick Simpson, Jr. I addressed you guys last fall with the problem. I live at 203 South Second Avenue. I have neighbors that live behind me on First Avenue that have pit bulls, and I'm not picking on pit bulls, I'm picking on any dog that has a vicious character. After I talked to you guys last fall, three times I was trying to mow my grass, and them dogs come up across the top of that fence, they come across, if I had to got off my lawnmower, I wouldn't have a left arm right now. My grandson was out playing today, riding his bicycle. The owner was out in the yard. Them dogs do not listen. Once last fall, the dog got out. The owner was chasing him. The dog was not paying any attention to the owner. He was running. When I come on my grass and see that dog, I had to go back in the garage and stay in the garage. Right now, they have about a three and a half to four foot fence, the same strength as chicken wire. You don't keep vicious dogs in fish and chicken wire. They need to build a six foot fence of either concrete, privacy fence, or some heavier type of fence. I'm at a point right now, I'm not going to watch one of my grandkids get chewed up. If you guys want to turn the City of Streeter back into the western days, that's what it's going to happen. Because if you guys sit on your butts up here and you say, well, we ain't going to do nothing, because all we want to do is bring the money in, we ain't going to protect the citizens of Streeter, then you wonder why people get pissed and leave the City of Streeter. You don't protect the people that are here. You don't take care of your elderly, you don't take care of your handicapped, and you don't take care of your kids. The first time a dog comes at me, it's going to be killed. That's a promise. And the first time they start shooting me, I'm going to shoot back. If that's what you guys want, continue to sit on your ass and don't do nothing.
Just keep your tone down.
Well, you know what? This problem was brought to you guys last fall, and nothing was ever done. And since then, I've had to jump off my lawnmower, I've had to go back into my garage, because these people don't care. Them are their dogs, they're going to take care of them. They let them do what they want. The dogs don't even listen to the owner.
When you see a situation like this, have you called animal control?
Yeah. You know what the animal control told me? You need to go over and sense your neighbor, so the dogs can get to know you. That's what they told me. I'm not going to sit at my neighbor.
Okay, thank you. We used to have an ordinance for that.
We still have an ordinance on both.
On this is though.
These are socks.
Okay, all right. We will follow up on that. Thank you. Next item, we'll jam in at the clock presentation.
Well, it's been almost four years ago, we stood here asking for permission and blessings to get jamming at the clock at Heritage Park. The weekly music series on Fridays in June, July, and August has been a learning process. Changed start time this year to 6 o'clock. Don't think we'll ever have another drum circle. And so it goes, we just go on adapting the change. I have to thank our audience for their great support, and right now, we're averaging about 125 people at the park on a Friday night. So we're again asking for your permission and blessing as we start year number four with the polka band, and hoping Mother Nature cooperates better this year. And Tony has the schedule to give to anyone that wants one.
Time in the world. Thank you.
Cindy, they need to bring their own lawn chairs, is that correct?
Right, everybody brings their own lawn chairs. We provide water.
Okay. Now, do we block all part of the street?
We do, but sometimes people sneak through anyways. That's not a big issue unless we get, you know, a bigger crowd.
Well, I was going to say, if the crowd gets bigger, you're probably going to have seventy in the street, right? On Vermillion Street there? Is that Vermillion?
No.
In Rowan?
No.
In Rowan. So we, I mean, from the alley up, the main, we could block that section off.
Well, public works usually leaves the barricades up against the light, and we go out, up and take them down.
All right, so that's not an issue?
No.
Is there anything else we can help you with?
I don't think so. Come and enjoy some of the music.
We should also say that in case of rain, the Eagles Club has been kind enough to offer the, their facility for indoor concerts in case we get rained out at Heritage Park. So if it's raining, go to the Eagles.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Okay, now we'll move to the agenda, item one.
Item one is, you guys have discussed it many, during the whole meetings and the previous meetings, but in front of you tonight is a proposed operating maintenance contract with Veolia Water North America, the current operator of the sewer plant, for a five-year contract to continue operations of the plant. Scott, right up until his last day, was working on this. We went out to an RFP and solicited and had interviews with two companies. So Veolia Water North America and Test Incorporated. So as you can see in my supplemental there, they have different operating models, which made them, you need to try to put together and analyze, but if you're looking at it, Veolia Water proposes an all-inclusive model, where basically, all costs outside of unforeseen circumstances are included in a base fee, which the city pays monthly to Veolia Water. Test Incorporated has a, has a different model, where basically, you pay for manpower and then every other fee that's for the sewer plant would come to the city. We asked both of them to step out of their comfort zones a little bit and modify their models for Streeter. Veolia did that by taking out electricity and sludge hauling, two of the major cost items down there. Those will be handled through the Veolia contract as a straight pass-through, so they will pay the bills for electricity and for sludge, but we will see that bill monthly with no markup. So it'll come straight through, and so any savings that they can negotiate on the power or the sludge hauling side, the city will reap those benefits directly. Same thing on electricity, if the city is able to negotiate a group rate, as the council discussed, we can work with Veolia to capture savings at the plant as well. Test stepped outside a little bit and basically included more items in their base fee than what they generally like to, including a maintenance line item and some of the smaller utilities at the plant, natural gas, telephone, annual chemicals. So the projections there show, as you can see, basically over a five-year period, assuming a, we had to assume annual increases for both, for both contractors, basically difference about 150,000 between the two, with Veolia being higher. But Veolia's model and contract that's in front of you has a negotiated annual increase. The city in the past has been able to negotiate that down to as low as 0.8%. We basically take a position that they have to come in and show us any increases and approve to us if they need an increase. So it's currently averaging tied back to the CPI of 1.39, but again, the city's has come up with less than that in the past, but 1.39 was used in the analysis, and Test is a flat one and a half. So the operating models can be different what they are. Any cost that is not specifically called out in the, in the contract is going to be borne by the city of the Test model, whereas Veolia, the case can be made, and in the past, you know, they have to really show us that the cost doesn't belong in the base fee. So with all of that, we looked at it, and the operating, we've had no issues at the plant for the past many years with Veolia operating, so with that, it's Scott's recommendation that we go, go with Veolia, but I'm happy to answer any questions.
I entertain a motion to authorize an approval of the agreement for the operation of this Streeter wastewater treatment facility between the City of Streeter and Veolia Water North America Central LLC. Is there a motion for it? Is there a second? Clerk, call a roll.
Peady?
Aye.
Rosack?
Aye.
Crouch?
Aye.
Scarborough?
Aye.
Marley?
Aye. Item two?
Item two, two or three are actually part of the same thing. Item two will be the public hearing, and item three will be the actual annexation ordinance. But there is a piece of wholly bounded property at 510 Golf Road. There's a farm, a farmstead house there, and then the farmland immediately to the west of Northport Shopping Center. All of, all the land around it has been annexed in the last, Northport's been in for years, but a piece of farmland to the west was annexed at the February meeting, leading this to be completely surrounded, so at this point, we would ask you to consider the, consider the annexation.
I entertain a motion to open the public hearing regarding the annexation of property at 510 Golf Road. So will. Is there a second? Any other questions? Anyone wish to make a comment?
You need to call a roll.
Oh, I'm sorry. Clerk, call a roll.
Peady?
Aye.
Rosack?
Aye.
Crouch?
Aye.
Scarborough?
Aye.
Marley?
Aye. Now we'll open up the public hearing. Hearing none. Then I would entertain a motion to close the public hearing. Is there a second? Any other discussion? Clerk, call a roll, please.
Peady?
Aye.
Rosack?
Aye.
Crouch?
Aye.
Scarborough?
Aye.
Marley?
Aye. Item three?
Item three is the annexation ordinance following that public hearing.
I entertain a motion to adopt an ordinance annexing 510 Golf Road to the City of Streeter situated in Bruce Township, counties of LaSalle and Livingston, Illinois. Is there a second? Any discussion? If my understanding knows that the owners of this property have not, who understand the contract?
I've spoken with them, they understand the annexation, yes.
Clerk, call a roll, please.
Peady?
Aye.
Rosack?
Aye.
Crouch?
Aye.
Scarborough?
Aye.
Marley?
Aye. Item four?
Item four, Mary Council, is another annexation, this time by petition. This is for the piece of property at the southwest corner of Main Street and Columbus Road. It has Dingle Lane sign there on that corner, but Marty Meredith, the property owner, has petitioned for its annexation, so recommended approval.
I entertain a motion to adopt an ordinance annexing property on West Main Street and Columbus Road situated in Eagle Township, counties of LaSalle and Livingston, Illinois. Is there a motion? So will. Is there a second?
Second.
Any other discussion? Clerk, call a roll, please.
Peady?
Aye.
Rosack?
Aye.
Crouch?
Aye.
Scarborough?
Aye.
Marley?
Aye. Item five?
Item five is the last annexation I'm on the menu, or on the agenda tonight, the new agenda, but, and this actually goes back to a, to an ordinance passed last, last year, ordinance 2018-18. It annexed a property owned by Mr. Mendoza out near Spring Lake. He owns property, the, the butts, the Norfolk Southern Line. There's a small piece north of the tracks, and then he has a large track to the south. The council passed the ordinance last year to, to annex it. When the county got around to updating their mapping, the city clerk got ahold of, or the county clerk got ahold of it, and the issue of the railroad tracks not being in the city already, they, they raised an objection and basically said, would the city be willing to remove that northern piece from the annexation? It affects no other annexations, and actually makes the, the issue of the road jurisdiction cleaner as well. So it's recommended that, based on the county clerk's recommendation, that we remove that northern piece from the annexation. So it's just north of the Norfolk Southern Tracks.
I entertain a motion to adopt an ordinance correcting ordinance 2018-18, annexing Jesus Mendoza's property passed by the city council on May 16, 2018. Is there a second? Any other discussion? Clerk, call a roll, please.
Peady?
Aye.
Rosack?
Aye.
Crouch?
Aye.
Scarborough?
Aye.
Marley?
Aye.
Marley?
Aye. Item six?
Thank you, Mary. Item six, it relates to an application filed to vacate Street right-of-way. It's the section of James Street between Illinois Street and Apollo Street. Two petitioners that abut the property, Greg and Arlena Salata and Jim Dennis, filed a petition to vacate the right-of-way. It's a large right-of-way. It's a, it's 100 feet wide. So tonight, it's on the agenda, but in the staff recommendation, you'll see that we asked, I think there's several residents here, we sent out per the council policy letters to those residents informing them of the potential vacation, but due to its size, by, by council policy, an appraisal will be, an appraisal would be required if we were to vacate. So before we took that step and spent that money, we wanted to talk to you guys and see if it's appropriate to do so, and also to notice the residents. So I think there's a few here that would like to speak or have an attorney to speak on their behalf, but if the council likes to move forward, we table the, the ordinance and then move forward the appraisal.
Good evening. My name is Emmanuel Guy, and I represent the residents of the affected area. I've been furnished a drawing by the city engineer that was sent to one of the occupants there, and it appears that the area that's sought by the Greg Salata is the entire area except for a 20-foot alley to remain open. It's my understanding of law and under the municipal code, 1191-2 of the code, that when the street is vacated by ordinance titled to the property vests the abutting landowners, unless the deed or other instrument provides otherwise. The other problem that I have with this, I don't think that you're suggesting that this is eminent domain, correct?
Correct.
Okay. So it's a voluntary vacating, and when that happens, as I said a moment ago, the abutting landowners are the ones who will get property divided equally. And as you can see, there are enough of them behind me, there's only one of the residents along Hall Street who's absent here tonight, he's working, but they're really not keen about this, and they really don't want to lose any of the property that they have. And then if, if it does come to, when you vacate the property, they will own the abutting property. The Salatas appear to own quite a bit of it, for half of it, but not the northern part of it. And Mr. Dennis, I guess, I don't know if he owns the blue part here on this map that I have, that was sent to Mr., one of the clients that I have, but we don't want to get ahead of ourselves, but I can just tell you by, just by the fact that they're here, that they are not enthused about having this project go forward. And if it does go forward, it has to have, there'll have to be certain restrictions placed in on how the city does this, and what will eventually end up here. My recollection is this was an old railroad track a few years ago, and in fact, one of the homes that my grandparents owned was almost in the center of the property, so I'm very familiar with the property. I believe that this railroad went all the way towards the Streeter, the old Streeter Brickyard. That has neither appeared up there, but it's just, it's been a railroad, started out as a railroad property, and then, I don't know the history of the property, but it appears that somehow it became an, just an alleyway or something, but anyhow, just to sum up, residents are not enthused about the city going ahead with this project. That's not to say that they're, they're set in their ways that they won't negotiate, or, but I can tell you that the sentiment that I've experienced in talking to them, that they're just simply not interested in the city moving ahead, but, and particularly, if you, if you do vacate, you're actually assisting private, private proprietary interests, not government, it's not a government function, there's no public interest involved here. And again, the case law that I read says that there must be some sort of public interest to sell the property. So with that said, if you have any questions, I would attempt to answer and I think that maybe some of them will be interested in, I know you've given an opportunity for them to speak and, but if any, if you have any questions, I might try to answer what you have.
I, you said something about they would be losing land, you meant part of the alley, not their land?
Correct.
Yeah.
Also, and I, this drawing shows that, um, I don't want to be picky about it, but it looks like the railroad right-of-way is part of this, uh, what they're trying to acquire. Obviously, you can't do business with Conrail under those circumstances or under any circumstances when you're dealing with railroads.
Yeah, so, and I'll just say, I said that the drawing was for, for the residents to understand more of what it was and, uh, and the whole reason you guys got the letters, uh, the city council passed a policy about four years ago that, but prior to this, we didn't use to send out letters, so the whole point of the letters was so you guys would have, have, have notification of these types of things. And again, uh, the, the reason it's on the agenda tonight is because of its width, the compensation would be required from the two petitioners if the council likes to move forward. So, rather than spend the money on the appraisal, if there's no interest in doing it, that's, that's what we're looking to find out. If there's no interest, then we won't spend the money on the appraisal. Or if you'd like to come back to committee the whole session, we could do it then too, but.
What was the intent? Um, it said to clean up property and add additional space, but is he going to grow trees? Is he going to store materials? Is there going to be noise? You know, that would be something I would want to know, especially by the looks of it.
Uh, Mr., I, I don't see Mr. Salata here, so I can't speak for him, but, uh, they, they both own businesses adjacent to, to the right-of-way and it was to add additional into the business. For what? That's, I can bring them into a committee at the whole if you'd like.
Well, uh, my recommendation, we, we table the site tonight and take it back and, uh, discuss it further and committee the whole.
Okay.
Thank you for your hearing, Mr. C.
When you, when you have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Beedie?
Aye.
Rosack?
Aye.
Crouch?
Aye.
Scarborough?
Aye.
Merrill Eisberg?
Aye.
Item seven?
Uh, item seven, Mr. Mayor, uh, also request that that be tabled, uh, right up until this morning. The, uh, two attorneys, uh, the FOP attorney as well as the city's, uh, attorney have been working on the final language. Uh, every, everything is, seems to be agreed to between the FOP and the city, uh, but I did not have a, an actual contract to bring to you tonight, so ask you to table and we will break to you at your next available meeting.
The email I received, basically it said that their attorney's been gone or something like this, but the FOP attorney did not manage to get a copy of it.
Correct.
But everything else, uh, was.
Yes.
Motion to table?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Bert, go roll, please.
Beedie?
Aye.
Rosack?
Aye.
Crouch?
Aye.
Scarborough?
Aye.
Merrill Eisberg?
Aye.
Item eight?
Item eight, uh, it's another contract, this time it's with the firefighters. Uh, so, uh, you see in the packet, this one, uh, has been, uh, ratified by the, uh, fire union. Uh, I have the signed copies in, in my office, so, uh, waiting on you, you guys' decisions tonight. Uh, Chief Bert is here, he's been on the negotiation team, uh, throughout the entire process, so I'll let him to speak to, uh, to the, to what's in the agreement, but.
Turn over Gary. Thank you. Mayor Council, the agreement with the firefighters remains, uh, pretty well status quo, other than some language that provides a $3,000 signing bonus for each number. Uh, there's an annual, uh, raise going back to May 1st of 17 through December 31st of 19. Uh, the first year was two percent, second year was two and a quarter and the last year was two and a half percent. Uh, they've also agreed to pay seventeen percent of their insurance premium. And the only other additional highlight that I have for you is the side letter that's attached with the contract that just states that we recognize that they have done the work as first responder and if we want to continue that beyond 2000, the end of 2019, that we will negotiate that with the next contract.
And I will also say, it's, uh, uh, also in the side letter, uh, states that, uh, all grievances and, uh, and outstanding, uh, arbitration matters are cleared if the contract is approved. So this will fully close the grievances and the arbitrations that were pending up until this point.
I entertain a motion to authorize the execution of an agreement between the City of Streeter and the Streeter Firefighters Union for the period beginning May 1st, 2017 and ending December 31st, 2019. Is there a second? Any other discussion?
Uh, Gary? The contract is till December 31st. I answer my own question?
December 31st of 19?
Any other comments, questions? Bert, go roll, please.
Beedie?
Aye.
Rosack?
Aye.
Crouch?
Aye.
Scarborough?
Aye.
Merrill Eisberg?
Aye.
Item nine?
Uh, item nine, uh, item nine and 10 are actually, uh, going to be part of the same. Item nine is to receive and place on file the recommendation from the zoning board of appeals that met last week concerning a, uh, zoning, or a variance request at 2001 Eastwood Avenue from Mr. and Mrs. Newman, uh, basically, uh, requesting a garage larger than 1,200 square feet, uh, which is the maximum allowed by code. Uh, the zoning board of appeals, uh, took the evidence and, uh, there's six findings required by the city code. Uh, they unanimously found, uh, positive on all six and recommend, uh, the issuance of the variance. Uh, so, uh, I, again, item nine will be to receive and place on file and item 10 will actually be to grant the variance.
Thank you. I entertain a motion to place on file the zoning board of appeals recommendation to approve the granting of a variance from 2001 Eastwood Avenue, owners Rocky and Lisa Newman, to construct a garage over 1,200 square feet.
So moved.
Is there a second? Any other discussion? Bert, go roll, please.
Beedie?
Aye.
Rosack?
Aye.
Crouch?
Aye.
Scarborough?
Aye.
Merrill Eisberg?
Aye.
And item 10, I'd entertain a motion to adopt an ordinance granting a variance from the provision of Title 17, Chapter 17.40, to allow construction of a garage larger than 1,200 square feet on 2001 Eastwood Avenue.
So moved.
Any discussion? Bert, go roll, please.
Beedie?
Aye.
Rosack?
Aye.
Crouch?
Aye.
Scarborough?
Aye.
Merrill Eisberg?
Aye.
Item 11?
Uh, item 11 is to receive and place on file the, uh, three recommendations from the plan commission, uh, from their meeting from last week. Uh, the first being to rezone property at 901 and 903 Hall Street from R-1A to C-2. Uh, they've recommended approval of that, uh, and we'll talk about it in 12 and 13. Uh, and then the other recommendation was recommending approval of the facade grant, uh, for 413 East Main and then the other recommendation was recommending approval of the facade grant for 415 East Main. So, number 11 will receive and place on file.
Council, can we take all three of these and the one that we have to do separately?
I would prefer that you do them separately.
Separately?
Well, to place on file, oh, no, to place on file, we can do it.
Okay, go rest in one minute.
I'm sorry, I misunderstood.
I'd entertain a motion to place on file the plan commission's recommendations, O-2, O-3, and O-4. Second. Any other discussion? Bert, go roll, please.
Beedie?
Aye.
Rosack?
Aye.
Crouch?
Aye.
Scarborough?
Aye.
Merrill Eisberg?
Aye.
Item 12, I'd entertain a motion to approve a change in zoning and amending the district zoning map for properties at 901 and 903 Hall Street from R-1A, single-family residential, to C-2 neighborhood commercial. Have a motion?
Yep.
So moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Is this property at all connected to Dangres?
Yes, uh, this position was by, uh, by Mr. Salata, but it's the, uh, it's the two lots along Hall Street, uh, west of the railroad tracks, uh, that, uh, Mr. Salata owns.
On Illinois?
At, along Illinois, uh, yeah, so it's on Illinois, uh, or butts Illinois. But the, uh, there's the tavern there that is zone C-2, as is, uh, Dangres Surgery itself. So this would basically, there, there's no spot zoning here, this takes all property owned by Mr. Salata and makes it C-2.
Any other comments? Bert, go roll, please.
Beedie?
Aye.
Rosack?
Aye.
Crouch?
Aye.
Scarborough?
Aye.
Merrill Eisberg?
Aye.
Item 13, I'd entertain a motion to approve and grant award of facade grant to Tony Moscato, owner, 413 East Main Street, in the amount of $15,000. Motion please.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? This facade grant and they have to submit the receipts and then it's up to 15,000.
Up to, up to 15,000, yes, but by the estimates they provided, they, they, uh, are projecting that they will go to the 15,000.
Okay. Bert, go roll, please.
Beedie?
Aye.
Rosack?
Aye.
Crouch?
Aye.
Scarborough?
Aye.
Merrill Eisberg?
Aye.
Item 14, I'd entertain a motion to approve and grant award of facade grant to Tony Moscato, owner, 415 East Main Street, in the amount of $15,000.
So moved.
Second.
Second. Any other discussion? Bert, go roll, please.
Beedie?
Aye.
Rosack?
Aye.
Crouch?
Aye.
Scarborough?
Aye.
Merrill Eisberg?
Aye.
Item 15?
Thank you, item 15, uh, is in relation to, uh, the MFT portion of this year's road program, which is the repaving of South Illinois Street from Main Street to Lundie Street. As everyone knows, uh, right now, we're, uh, down there putting in sewers and, uh, sidewalk, uh, on that section. That was paid for through a separate contract, uh, through the city's sewer fund, uh, but the MFT portion of our road program this year, uh, and the fiber group line, will repay that section once that work's complete. Uh, I.D.O. requires that there be a, a separate resolution, uh, authorizing the money, 151,000, 160 dollars. Uh, once that's passed, we will be able to go out to bid and, and get that work done, hopefully, uh, midsummer.
I'd entertain a motion to authorize the appropriation of MFT funds in connection with the South Illinois Street resurfacing project of 2019.
No move.
Second.
Second.
Any other discussion? Bert, go roll, please.
Beedie?
Aye.
Rosack?
Aye.
Crouch?
Aye.
Scarborough?
Aye.
Merrill Eisberg?
Aye.
Item 16?
Item 16, Mayor Council, it relates to a request and, uh, and after an investigation at the corner of Lundie and South Bloomington Street, uh, Lundie Street, uh, and that section is a truck route, uh, and there is one parking space, the ordinance would create no parking 33 feet back from the corner. Uh, in the state traffic code, it's already 22 feet, so this basically will remove one space. Uh, but as trucks try to make the turn from Bloomington Street to Lundie, they either have to be in the west side of Bloomington Street to swing and miss the cars that park in that first space or cut it really short and get into the other lane of Lundie. So, for safety reasons, uh, the request is valid and recommend that we make that 33 feet from the corner, no parking.
Or be in somebody's yard.
Or be in someone's yard.
I'd entertain a motion to adopt an ordinance initiating a no parking zone on the 100 block of 100 East Lundie Street, Streeter, Illinois.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any other discussion? Bert, go roll, please.
Beedie?
Aye.
Rosack?
Aye.
Crouch?
Aye.
Scarborough?
Aye.
Merrill Eisberg?
Aye.
Item 17?
Item 17, Mayor Council, uh, is the, uh, the finalized version of the TIF redevelopment agreement with Vector. Uh, council approved in concept this agreement, uh, two months ago, but it's finally, uh, already in final form. Uh, we had one change tonight, which, uh, would give you a separate page. Uh, as part of the agreement, the city is, uh, agreeing to sell bonds, uh, as was discussed, of 1.6 million dollars. Uh, the original agreement that you had in your packet, uh, said that the city would sell those bonds within 60 days. After talking to our bond counsel and, and the attorneys, uh, we'll be right, we're, we're very close to that 60 days, but they'd like to change it to 90 just to make sure we make it, so that way we're not in violation of the agreement from the start, so, uh, again, this is, uh, an agreement that was approved in concept two months ago, but this is the final version.
And that was the only change, 60 to 90 days.
Yes.
I'd entertain a motion to adopt an ordinance approving the execution of a TIF redevelopment agreement by and between the City of Streeter and Vacant Manufacturing Inc. and the Streeters South Industrial TIF District.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any other discussion? Bert, go roll, please.
Beedie?
Aye.
Rosack?
Aye.
Crouch?
Aye.
Scarborough?
Aye.
Merrill Eisberg?
Aye.
Item 18?
Uh, item 18, actually, now that, uh, the council has formally approved that that project is going to go forward, uh, as, as part of that project and in part of the, uh, 2.6 million dollar, uh, bond, the city will be, uh, building a road through the industrial park, uh, down adjacent to Vector. Because of that, there is a 12-inch water main that, uh, is a main feeder, uh, from the water plant to, uh, to the city. Uh, because of that relocation of that road, uh, there's a portion that has to be, uh, redesigned and relaid, so I'm requesting that, uh, we issue a, a contract with Chairman and Associates to do that work. Uh, I, I designed all the roadway and have all the base files for that work, this will just be the water main portion only. And it is paid for out of the 1.6 million dollars.
I'd entertain a motion authorizing execution of a professional services agreement through Watermain Improvement Engineering Services in connection with the Vector Industrial Park Road Project.
So moved.